All right. This joint meeting. I'm gonna call joint meeting, North Bend City Council and U R A work session. June tenth at four thirty.
As long as we have to sit here.
What?
If we have to talk for a couple of hours, we're gonna need some water. Can I go steal a couple of birds?
Okay.
Depending how fast she is. We'll take roll call.
Um, Council Jones.
Present.
Council Hamilton.
Present.
Council Garvoden.
Present.
Council Goll.
Here.
Council Schultz.
Here.
And Council Nodak is here.
She's getting.
And if you all show for the uh record, uh Mayor Inglekey has to excuse absence and will not be here this evening. She's thirsty somewhere else.
Denver, they've got. You can stay here now.
I know, thank you.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
No public comment online and not in person.
Okay. North Bend Housing Authority presentation. Anybody here? David, do we have anybody gonna?
Are they online?
They uh.
On Zoom. There it is.
I see.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. I'm Stephen McMurtry and um with D C M Communities, we are the developer for the North Bend Family Housing Site, which you're seeing here this evening. And we just wanted to have a chance to meet with you and give you an update on the project. Uh Matt Boardestras, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, has just texted me that he's logging in right now. So I'll fill a little bit of space uh as he's able to join us here in a moment. But as you can see, this is a rendition of our site that is at two one two one Madrona Street, uh the site of the former Banger Elementary School. Recent, we've been working on this project for the last couple of years, and I see Matt is logging in right now. Um, and we're excited to announce that we uh are working with our state Housing Finance Agency, Oregon Housing and Community Services, through their soft launch program. Um, the state has issued a a new application process called Or- Orca, or the Oregon Centralized Application Process. We were one of the first projects to be selected in the state to move through this, which is called Soft Launch. And uh just as of last Friday, we completed our first step in that process. And and we're happy to say that we are moving forward with the hopes of having full financing in place by the end of this year and starting construction, hopefully. If not by the end of this year, early next year. So we are very excited. Some big uh steps that we've made in the last years to complete all of our environmental ru- review processes with HUD uh with a lot of help from the city of North Bend and the great folks there. Big shout out to Derek Payne and all of the fantastic work he and the staff have done to help us with that. Uh, that is a huge hurdle and something that's very expensive and very timely, but we've completed that. We've been working with Business Oregon. Uh Matt and his staff have been working very, very hard uh to secure grants to go through the demolition of the existing building. We know that it's a eyesore and a bit of a nuisance to the community. We have to get some. It's fairly expensive to take that building down, and we've been working for some time with Business Oregon and their Brownfields Program to sec- secure some monies to take that building down. We're very, very close. We just had some communication this afternoon from Business Oregon again, and we're keeping our fingers crossed by tomorrow afternoon. We finally have some information on that. Should we receive positive information that the grant that we've requested and and been told is imminent, is ready to go? Uh, our general contractor is ready to mobilize into the site at really at a moment's notice and get started and and take that school down. So a lot of positive momentum. Uh, we appreciate the community's patience and we are thrilled to be able to move forward with this project. It is going to be broken into two phases. The state did request that. Uh, the first phase will be a hundred and five units, and the second phase will be as many as seventy one units. We're hoping that they will flow sequentially. And with that, um, I'll pause for any questions, but also cede the floor to Matt.
No, thank you, Stephen, and I apologize. I was trying to log in. I'm I'm up in Seaside for the Rural Oregon Continue of Care Board Meeting, so um had to step out of that to be able to come into this meeting, but um you know, I'm just very grateful to be here at this point, and I also just want to say that I'm very grateful for the partnership with D C M Communities in this. Um, as a housing authority, um, we make the most logical sense to be a regional provider of developing affordable housing. But as we currently are, um, we would not have had the bandwidth to do this without D C M Communities bringing us and leading us to this point. And so we're very excited to be at this phase where um where we're now finishing up the impact assessment um and moving forward towards the financial closing with the state for that first phase one. Um, one of the other things I think is really important to really um touch on, and I don't know if Stephen mentioned this, but um it is um one of the partnerships that we have with this development is with KU Health and Wellness. And so um with that partnership, KU Health and Wellness is contributing over two million dollars towards the development of this project, and with that we will um work with them to have twenty and provide twenty set aside units for individuals that they're serving so that they could essentially work with individuals with severe and persistent mental illness, embed staff onsite, but give us a more integrated community setting um to where we can literally, you build up this site, integrate our partners from our tribal partners to KU Health and Wellness, and truly have a site that serves everyone and brings um a partnership onto it. And so very excited to be at this point. Um, and even more excited once we're able to start scratching the ground and start seeing the units get built down there. But we're we're right there at the finish line, and so we're very excited um to be pushing this forward and to really kind of be a a guinea pig for the state's new Orca process, because as Stephen said, we are going with them through a soft launch process, and so we have been volunteering for everything that we possibly can to basically be their beta tester for um for this process. And so part of the advocacy that we've been doing um over this past couple of years has just been consistently uh making sure that we're in front of Oregon Housing Community Services as often as we can and just really trying to build up that that partnership, but also showcase that we have the community will down here to build housing and to bring these services on board. And so um I think another thing that's um kind of a testament to that is this week we'll actually have Director Bell from Oregon Housing Community Services down here onsite to look at some of the housing developments that are coming up on the south coast. And so very excited for the fact that North Bend Family Housing is kind of spearheaded um bringing us closer as a region to the state of Oregon so that we can start leveraging these financing resources. And that being said, I know that we've talked a lot. Um, and I know that you guys um have a busy agenda ahead of yourselves, and so if you guys have questions, I think this would be a good time for um Stephen and I to be able to help answer those.
So will the North Bend Housing Authority actually run this, or how is that gonna work?
Yes, so we will um, we will be the owner of the site, but what we are doing is um we are bringing in a third-party property management agency called Cascade Property Management. And and for at least the first two years, they will be the onsite property manager for us. Um. They have quite a bit of experience working with P S H and also managing other housing authority authority inventories around the northwest. And part of the reason why we're bringing them in is because this will be the first large-scale development that we've done in forty years. Our current staffing at the Housing Authority is really set up to manage the status quo of what we currently have or in the south coast. And so this one site will almost double the amount of units that we have as an agency, and so we're gonna be bringing Cascade Management to help us with our bandwidth for that um to make sure that we're maintaining compliance, but also making sure that the site is operating smoothly as we then work strategically in the background to build up our own staffing, to be able to um grow the Housing Authority to become our own developer and continue doing property management going forward. And then um obviously, and then KU Health and Wellness will also um have space onsite to provide um permanent supportive housing services to those twenty set aside units. Um, the Housing Authority will be um bringing in a resident services coordinator on our own staff that will serve the site. And then we have also um executed M L Us with both of our tribal partners in the community to where um if we have tribal households that we're serving that those um both are um Cokeal Indian Housing Authority as well as the C T Kalusi Tribe as needed could come in to provide support to tribal households as well. So it'll be a pretty interactive site, but it'll um technically be ran by the Housing Authority, but we'll have different partners playing different roles in that.
How how long is? I I'm new to this project. How long has this project been in the works and maybe you could give three highlights of in that history?
So this um this project actually predates my time at the Housing Authority. Um, I'll let Stephen kind of give the background to it, but Stephen and D C M Communities also, they out, they identified this site as a potential, and so they initially came in and they pursued it, they acquired it, and then developed a partnership with the Housing Authority to develop the site going forward. And so Stephen, I will concede it to you because it was here before I got here.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. Yeah, I um. So we've been working on this site since late twenty twenty, but really in earnest since twenty twenty one. Um, it was owned by a a gentleman in the valley uh and had, he had had plans to, at one point in time, perhaps uh turned it into a commercial, maybe a strip mall or something like that. It didn't work out. Um. We approached him about pursuing it with the idea of bringing forth housing, and and as Matt said, we had a relationship with his predecessor, Marka Turner, the Housing Authority. Marka and I worked together. I'm the former Housing Director for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, and so Marka and I had a working relationship uh when I had my position there as colleagues. And we approached her about potentially developing this out in partnership to build up the capacity of the Housing Authority. Um, I think, you know, talking about highlights, one, it's, these are, and these are the things that I'm really excited about the site. Its location in the community uh lends itself to um being walkable, but also in some growing transit options. It's both um, you know, suburban in neighborhood location or proximity, but also then your uh business district area access is really close by, walkable to parks and obviously um schools that are in the area are designed uh is there and intended to have it blend in with the surrounding community and be an asset. Um, you know, and and as this is intended to serve families that are are working and really just households, those that are at sixty percent or less of area median income. I mean, that's the one, that's the one sort of qualifier right there. Uh because of the way this project is being financed, uh the the big qualifier is that folks must be at sixty percent or less of area median income. Outside of that, really, the intention and has always been uh from Marka and and certainly from Matt, the idea is we have a lot of folks that we'd like to serve uh from seniors, families, those with you know, intellectual developmental disabilities, those that have had bouts of homelessness, tribal folks, we have a lot of folks that are in need, and this is an opportunity to uh help working families and everything like that. So this is really an opportunity to bring some good needed housing to the community.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I was going to ask if, I think it was the Housing Authority that was involved with the motel that was north of the Bryant's home there on on uh Sherman. And is that, is there, could you give us an update on that, please?
Yeah, so that um is actually not a Housing Authority um project. That was Operation Rebuild Hope um as part of their turnkey project, and so I actually don't have any um official updates on that that I can give.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anybody else? We.
Well.
Yep, we appreciate the update. We kept looking forward to seeing it.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah. No, we're we're definitely looking forward to seeing it too, and I look forward to um being able to do one of these meetings in the future where you're actually coming down onsite to get a tour of it. So um, we will keep our eye on the prize and keep going towards the goal.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, discussion on council procedures and addressing member concerns. And this is brought up by Council Jones.
Yes. So um, I apologize for losing a little bit of the formatting here. Um, this kind of follows up with um the agenda item I brought two meetings ago. Um. Where I wanted to, i- if the rest of the council agrees or, you know, a quorum or a better agrees um, how we could explore governing ourselves better in the moment. Um, and so if people think it's timely and worth the time, we can, we can walk through people's ideas or these ideas I presented. Um, I I do want people to be aware that uh every two years, pretty much when a new council is signed in, there is a place, there is a meeting where uh we're invited to bring our suggestions. And um that will certainly happen sometime early next year, I assume. Um, but I I thought it might be timely, and I think if if we agree, we can walk through this. If if nobody, if we don't have a quorum to agree that it's timely to talk about some of these suggestions, then we can table it. Um, I can, I can walk through the ideas if you.
In front of us, I don't have a problem. Taking the reader's digest. Anybody else? Anybody got any heartburn yesterday?
Well, it's timely.
Well, how much time do we get on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I think that's fifteen minutes. Yeah, okay. So so maybe this is perhaps just food for thought. Um, and if we can make choices in the now, we can, we can do that. So um I, there remain considerations. Um, the the most important one in my opinion is um when we a- addressing conduct violations, points of order. So our council code, you know, we govern ourselves. It's up to us to kind of hold each other accountable in one way or another. And um I'm particularly concerned about uh accusations. And I think that it's really fair to say that at any point in time, any one of us could feel uh that there is something going wrong. There there's something that we need to bring forward. Um, and it's so important that we bring it forward. Um, and you know, we're elected. That's that's part of what we're here for, is to bring our concerns. I think that it's worth in those moments um to to hear those accusations or to hear those concerns. Um, and then in that moment, take a roll call kind of vote or something like that, where where we as a collective say, I just, I agree with this assessment, I disagree with this assessment. Um, I, I'm involved in this, so I recuse myself. I vote to discuss at a later time, I vote to discuss now. Like, when it's an accusation, I think it really um is important for us to, in that moment, have a collective where we see if we should consider it more in that moment. Does that make sense? Am I making sense? I don't know.
Like, like, can you give an example of, like, what do you mean?
Because I think that sometimes people think personally, and they think it's an accusation when it's not an accusation, or are there, is there like a big one that you're thinking of? So, so um.
Like, we're doing our meeting.
Yeah, we're doing our stuff. Meeting, we're doing our meeting and um I'll just, somebody says, Council, Council Jones is taking up too much time. Council Jones is taking up too much time. Um, that's legitimate, right? We we have time limits on everything and our time is precious. If somebody says Council Jones is taking up too much time on this agenda item she brought forward. Um, we take a moment where we go down the road, we say, do we agree? Do we want to spend a little more time on this, or should we not? Or, you know, I I have comments too, I should recuse, you know, that that opportunity to go through all of our choices in that moment. Because um one of the things that I think has happened is that um accusations go unchallenged in the moment. So the public record has a sort of um view that's presented. And uh we don't ever take a moment uh where we say if we agree or not as a collective. Does that clarify?
Yes, more so.
Okay, okay. Um. So that's the most important one. I think that anytime somebody brings forward an accusation of some sort, we we need to pay attention to it, but we also need to assess as a group in that moment. That's, that's what I think. So that's the first one. That's the really most important one.
Good, well.
I can be addressed um to help because um I know there's three items here. So on the first one, um uh in your rules of procedure, so you have a parliamentarian, and that is your city attorney. And so as council members, you can be um ask the chair at any time to be recognized. And so the purpose so that everyone's on the same sort of sheet of music. A point of order specifically is uh to be used when you believe that your rules of procedure have been violated. So if something occurs in a meeting and you believe that the council rules were violated, the appropriate would be to ask the chair to be recognized. And then you have your parliamentarian who then can rule on it. And so that's that purpose, and that that should address number one as to what you're asking for. And so I just wanted to put that out because I see you have number two, number three, and if the the council's good with that, then it'll sort of move you forward to number two. But at at the moment, the time in the moment that you think you ask the chair to recognize you, uh, once you're recognized, explain what your point of order is, and then at that time, your parliamentarian can chime in. Um, and we all have the rules in front of us uh and can render a decision.
So, so correct me if I'm wrong here. So what I'm hearing is that somebody, an individual has to uh call out rules have been violated. And then our city attorney is the parliamentarian or our, I thought, I was under the impression that we had to parliamentariate ourselves.
This is the president.
Attorney.
Oh, sure. He's a parliament.
Yeah, you have a parliamentarian and you have a sergeant-at-arms.
Okay.
So the sergeant-at-arms is to maintain civility during your meetings. Your parliamentarian is to interpret your rules and then has the say on your rules.
Okay.
If you don't like the rules, you have the right to change your rules, but he will render a position based on the rules or item at hand. Or say, let me look into that. Let me get back to the next meeting.
Okay, so this drills this down a little bit more. That's, that's great. Thank you for that. This is really then around um accusations. Accusations of anything unethical behavior, crimes, those kinds of things, an accusation. Um, I I'm hopeful, or I would like you to consider that when an accusation is made, we go a little bit further. Sounds like an accusation has been made, and we all say whether we agree or disagree that with the validity of that um or and or vote to discuss it. Yeah. And just just as a point of, an additional point of order so that accusations can be addressed more quickly.
In real time.
Yeah, yeah. So consider that. Um. The other two things are really about um. And I don't, I don't know that the council has ever done this, about about written statements um in addition to the public record that explain rationale for choices. Um, and and it's, it comes up for me again and again around um rationales for um decisions made in the past that are still, you know, there's not enough information, there's nothing online to point um to why the council made those choices, or the quorum, a quorum of the council made those choices. And so I, I wonder if there's um some room to make some statements about the whys. And so that's a consideration. And that kind of ties together two and three.
I think that would be real time-consuming.
Yeah, I agree with that. It's true.
And cumbersome, labor-wise.
That is true.
No.
I think it should be in the minutes. Normally, that kind of thing, if you take a vote, it can be right there in the minutes.
It is.
I think it'll be in the minutes already.
Yeah.
Yeah, where I think the, at least the.
It's on the video. I mean, they can hear everything that we did.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I mean, if I may, um, I I certainly understand. Uh, for instance, you've listed three here. Um, the reasons behind a seventy thousand spent on legal fees for the censure. Um, the council took action. There was a motion made. Um, uh, there was a independent investigation. Uh, you have correct me if I'm wrong, something like a hundred and seventy-seven page document out there um that if anyone takes the time to read, it's all there, and all the evidence is there. There was a reason you all took. Hmm, the fact that other folks are spinning it. Well, you can't control spin. That's the reality. Um, I will say even the newspaper article had like ten pieces of incorrect information. Um, the second, the rationale for paying Malin's legal fees, one, one and a half years ago. Um. Uh, yes, um, I, as recent as Saturday, I heard someone say, you know, make a statement that I requested that my legal fees be reimbursed. That is an absolute false statement. Um, but if anybody wants to know why the council did that, they only Um, but if anybody wants to know why the council did that, they only need to go to the city administrator website because uh there was an ethics complaint found, it was investigated, and the attorneys actually state why and what occurred. It's all out there. Um, uh, same thing with the whole police chief stuff, you know, it's it's out there. Clarification on the circumstances surrounding the airport incident involving TSA. Um, the federal government took a look at that. Um, there was no wrongdoing on the part of the city. There was wrong part on behalf of the airport under a previous director. The airport board has resolved that. They paid their fines. It's moved on. Um, it doesn't behoove the city to come out with a statement that says the city went after um, uh, additional funds to pay for services being provided. And the documents and the actions speaks volumes. But again, it's the spin doctors out there. The reality is is we have a contract with the airport and we're now paid for services that were being free. And that's that's we've we've created a new relationship and that's why there's a new executive director out there. They have a board, they addressed it. There was no misfeasance, malfeasance or anything on behalf of the city that we did wrong. And in fact, that was part of the internal seventy thousand dollar investigation. So again, as as the chair said, you could spend a lot of resources. If the council wants statements, you have an attorney. You know, you can charge the attorney to come up with with a statement um to correct a lot of the misinformation, the letters, the editor, all that, and say, these are the facts. Doesn't mean that anyone out there is going to stop start um spewing other stuff. If you tell someone the sky is blue today, they may say green. That's First Amendment. They have that right. Um, uh, it's unfortunate sometimes though when it's an elected official putting out disinformation, misinformation. Um, for instance, the letter to the editor from the abandoned mayor, um, which is grossly incorrect. And I'm sure she didn't get authorization from her council to use her title position for a position statement for the city, but that's on her. So, but uh, yeah, a lot of misinformation in there. So so I digress. There's no, in my opinion, the facts are there. Anyone that wants them can see them. And it's why I'm still here and I still have a job. If I did all this stuff, it would have been grounds for firing. So again, I I it's not requested on my part. And as the chair said, yeah, it would probably take a lot of time to go back. Um, but yeah, I'm it's unfortunate that you keep dealing with the same stuff. Um, because it does keep getting regurgitated. And um, the media only used um verbiage from a lawyer um who can say whatever they want on behalf of their client. Um, uh, that doesn't make it fact. It's a hundred and seventy-seven page document makes it fact. It that's evident. So that's the difference. And that is stated in the document. So uh, thanks for the uh.
Since we're touching on the investigation, I would like to state that your council rules say that the substance of any discussion will be included in the minutes. There is nothing whatsoever regarding the nine-page letter that my attorney read into the record. There's nothing concerning the substance of that document. Nothing. So there's a violation of council rules, and if you want to call that an accusation, go for it.
So point of order. May I? And see, that's exactly how it should be used. Because that is a false statement right there.
There's nothing.
Uh, I have the floor, sir.
You need to go.
Okay, I have the floor. All right, and the city attorney is here, okay? And the counselor and the council has been told. And unfortunately, it just keeps coming up. In fact, I just saw a former mayor regurgitate the same disinformation. You had a meeting. It was recorded. There are minutes of action that was taken. The entire uh document she's referring to, her attorney read into the record. It's all out there. In fact, we linked the video online so the whole public could see it. You can read it at the bottom of the screen. The document that she is referring to was distributed by the council member after the meeting recessed and adjourned. It was not part of the meeting. It wasn't entered into the record. It wasn't distributed as part of the record. So therefore, point of order, Mr. City Attorney, should that document be attached or should have been attached to the minutes?
Or summarized?
Uh, no, let.
Point of order.
I'm like a yes or noer to me. All right, so it's at the bar. Um, we can't hear you.
We haven't changed them yet. We still do not have council rules that rely on the video. The council rules say
Yes, yeah.
Cause you can't handle it, Pat.
That's enough. Mark, can you answer the question?
The the letter was provided after the meeting, so the letter should not be a part of the record. The city records all of its meetings. The city's in the process of updating its its council rules. Um, I I feel like we've we've gone over this.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would also add to Counselor Jones's comments that the council rules do provide some guidance on written communication and if it's written communication that is a uh from the body itself, that it means you need to get approval from the body. So if there was some point where uh it was appropriate to have a written statement that that you have that provision in your council rules.
So we have that if we want to, but it's also a costly.
Yes.
Yeah, it would be time.
All right, so Mr. Chair, for the benefit of timing, you're at your fifteen minutes and it's up to you to whether or not to extend or move on to another agenda.
It will move on to no. Next one, rules of the North Bend.
I believe this will be presented by our city attorney.
For to help lead this. Uh, this is and well, I guess this is here as a work session item to uh to circle back from last uh May twenty-eighth council meeting uh wherein the ordinance was put on the agenda. Uh, so there was some discussion and it was the the will of the council to bring this item back for further discussion. Uh, we're here today to work session. Counselors have the opportunity to provide any other additional changes that they might want to see. Um, now would be some time for discussion on the council rules in general. Uh, happy to field questions on the the ordinance itself, or we could save that for the um agenda review following this work session item.
And then if I may, so for the benefit of the council, because there was a point of order raised at the May twenty-eighth uh meeting, um, that is where and uh so that you are aware, the city attorney has confirmed that the agenda item regarding amendments to council rules from our May twentieth meeting was indeed properly placed on the agenda. Council Rule two point zero four point zero six oh provides that the city administrator sets the agenda. While Counselor Nordoff pointed to some other agenda setting rules, those rules provide a path for individual counselors to add agenda items and process removing those requests forward. Those rules do not preclude the city administrator from adding an agenda item simply because a counselor asked for it. Second, during the public comment, one speaker raised a potential compliance issue with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Whether the minutes are written or digitally recorded does does change the city's obligation to make available to persons with disabilities in a form usable by them. Written minutes um may have to be converted to audio minutes. Digital or audio recordings may have to be converted to a written form. The city act has and will comply to uh will continue to apply with the ADI. Um, and I've also sent the council a memo um after inquiry with the Department of Justice that says that what we are doing currently actually exceeds um uh their minimum requirements. Finally, um, another comment raised uh issues uh of freedom of speech with the proposed rule amendments that you'll hear during your regular meeting. Um, the proposed rule amendments do not impose any restrictions on speech and are fully um uh compatible with um freedom of speech. And so we just wanted to clarify that uh because there were questions raised at the last meeting. So thank you.
And I think
Point of point of order. Mr. Wolf. Am I to understand that the city administrator may place an item on the agenda in disregard of the two point oh four oh six oh agenda and order of business where it says placing items on work sessions or meeting agendas by counselors. B, a majority of the council wants further discussion on agenda item. Nope, not that one. Small B. A request from a counselor for action items such as a resolution, an ordinance or an amendment to the municipal core code requires the expense express concurrence of a majority of the council in order to be placed on a future council regular meeting agenda. Are you telling me that the city administrator can waive that aside and on his own, take a counselor's suggestion or request and put it right there on the agenda without getting the concurrence of four counselors? Are you telling me that the city administrator can do that in violation of what it says are our council rules for us counselors?
What I am saying
Not seeing that in the in the um the code, the city code. Or in the
I I'm I'm happy happy to address your question, counselor. Um, Rule two point oh four dot oh six oh. Preparation of the agenda. The city administrator prepares the agenda. Your city administrator puts all sorts of agenda items on the agenda without a majority of of the council directing him to do so. Subsection two is a provision that's put in place so that individual counselors have the authority to get items onto it provides a process for them to get items onto the agenda. Without that rule, individual counselors would have no authority to get to get stuff on the agenda. You'd have to talk amongst yourself at each meeting and get four of you to direct your administrator to put something on the agenda. So we have to read these rules together. The first rule states that that your city administrator sets the agenda. So he's putting all sorts of items on your agenda at each and every meeting. Simply because some a counselor has asked for an agenda item does not somehow uh uh usurp his authority to uh to place items on the agenda.
It's very specific though that for a particular counselor to place an ordinance or a resolution on the meeting agenda, not the work session, it takes the concurrence. And yours and it reads the agenda item reads that Counselor Garboden made the request. So to my way of thinking, then it should be this rule that says that he has to have the express concurrence of four counselors for that to be placed on the agenda. And I disagree that the city administrator can just pick and choose and pluck that item that a counselor wants and put it right there in the meeting agenda bypassing the required concurrence of four counselors.
Yeah, and I and again, I I I I just point back to we have to look at these rules as a whole. That your administrator sets the agenda. And then there's subsection two is a carve-out to provide a pathway. A a an additional pathway. It's not one or the other. It's an additional path.
Does not seem ethical.
Okay, but but what what you're not remembering is that the prior council meeting was a joint work session council meeting as approved by all of us sitting here, including you. So let's just move on.
Yes, move on.
All right.
Have it your way. Doesn't pass the smell test, folks. Doesn't pass the smell test.
I thought we were all here for the good of the city of North Bend, and it sure doesn't seem like we're doing nothing for the good of the city of North Bend right now.
Are you an attorney? Cause I read the council rules. Obviously, you guys don't.
Okay.
It's not true.
Go on.
Go for it.
You bet.
Oh, we'll review the agenda for tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
What? That's enough. I got a ceremony on the thing tomorrow for Scott, it was our ten years and then you'll walk us through the content.
All right, yes, sir. All right, um, the first is you have approval of the minutes from your May twenty-eighth meeting. Uh, and the uh, we have not received anything um uh from counselors, so I assume that stands. You have your acknowledgement of your bills for May of twenty twenty-four. Um, there is a intergovernmental agreement here. Um, this is a bit of housekeeping. Uh, this is an agreement between the Behavioral Health Services uh for North Bend Public Library. It's on page seventeen. Um, as you may recall, you previously had a grant. Um, and then uh that grant expired and then we now have a collaborative effort um being paid. Um, our library director is here, but we put it on there as consent pretty straightforward. The next is a memorandum of understanding between the North Bend Public Library and Coos Bay Public Library for Community Engagement Specialists. Um, and so uh uh and that person uh works through Coos Health and Wellness. Um, and so that's why you have back to back. And then we have a authorization to continue the contract with Waterworth. Um, that's the utility rate consultant that Public Works is working on uh for wastewater. So this is a continuation to allow them to continue uh to do their work. Um, there is a purchase of two uh Speed Alert trailers. Um, uh, it is just what it says is two speed trailers with a license plate reader technology um for enhancement of services to the um, and so that is A through F. If there's no issues, the consent calendar will move forward as presented, sir.
Okay, it looks like six and seven are just administrating. Making room in the budget for grants.
Which is pretty exciting. Those are big amounts.
All right, you're um, next is a public comment. And then at that point uh here, we'll have a resolution uh for approval changes to the fiscal year twenty-four uh budget. You may or may not recall, if you were here, not all of you are. But we started in the latter part of two thousand and collectively working with the county Coos Bay, we all divvied up and did grants. Um, there was then a change order uh because uh we had an agreement with another organization and had to transfer it to another, which was Neighbor Works Unco. Uh, we now need to do the closeout. And so we um are asking for the resolution uh to actually approve changes so that we show on our budget that half a million that came in and went out. And so our finance director is here. If you have any questions, glad to answer them. All good there?
Yep.
All right, the next is same thing with the fiscal agent um for the one point nine two million, basically one million nine hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars and eighty-nine cents. There is a portion of that that's also covers our administration of that grant. Um, this is coming in from the state and it will then go out to organizations. I mentioned that, for instance, we'll be adding an agenda item for tomorrow. Um, so when we get to that, that grant will be with one of the organizations, AYA, in order that we will reimburse them. Um, so we get the money from the state. We reimburse them for their efforts in the community. So if there's any additional questions on why we have to show that on our budget, um, our finance director is here to let you know.
Is this the pass-through?
Pass-through, yes. This is the fiscal agent.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, the Office of Homeless Response actually says who gets what. And um, in fact, the mayor was at that meeting. They approved. And so now we're moving forward with putting it on our books because the money will start coming through us.
Okay.
Great.
Okay. All right, at this point, uh, there will be a required public hearing. Uh, every year you hold a public hearing for uh uses of the state uh revenue sharing. Um, and then of course, then you actually have to agree to accept the money. And so um, I believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about eleven thousand, give or take, maybe a little more.
Well, that's what they've agreed to in
Principal.
We actually get about just around a hundred thousand a year from the state, so it's choosing to
And then we do a percentage. So we get the money and then we, yes, use a percentage of it, so.
The purpose of the hearing is really to make the election and have a discussion. You don't have to make any decisions about spending that money. The purpose of the hearing is really to make the election and have a valid discussion. You don't have to make any decisions about spending that money.
We're just approving to receive.
Just approving, yes.
To receive it.
It takes very much soliciting input and possibly using.
Okay. Have we put out solicitations for people to apply for it, or what time does that happen?
We have not yet, um, because we're not even in the budget. The money won't even be here until July first. And then the governing body wanted to have a discussion this year about, you know, what percentage and what you all wanted to do.
Yeah. And so. We don't have to do that.
We don't have to.
Not until you have a July one budget in play. Yes. And so, yes. All right, the next is a public hearing. This is the actual adoption of your proposed fiscal year twenty five budget with the resolution. And so you've had a recommendation from your budget committee. And so at this point, if you want to make changes, this would be an opportunity to make it. Otherwise, this is your opportunity. Uh, and you need to adopt your budget by midnight, June thirtieth of this year to go into effect July one. Any questions about the budget? Hasn't changed any since the budget committee? Yes.
Two small changes.
Oh, these two?
Yeah.
Come on up then.
This is very, two brief changes to it. One of them is a, uh, twelve thousand dollar addition to the parks budget. Um, for additional seasonal help. That request came in after the uh, materials went out to budget committee, so we didn't make any changes for that one. Um, but there is a, a page in the budget document that shows that request and the increase there. Um. And then the other request is a twenty five thousand dollar addition to the, uh, Equipment and Construction Fund um, for the repair and replacement of siding on the firehouse number two. And that issue came up, um, subsequent to the budget committee hearing. Two very minor changes, but they are different from what the budget committee approved, approved. Um, and each of those changes are, um. Within the allowed changes without having to do anything other than go ahead and make a change. Yes.
I just, just because I misunderstanding something here. So I'm looking on the, um, staff recommendation for the adoption of the of fiscal year twenty five budget resolutions. Um, and it says, hold a public meeting and approve resolution. Is that what, is that what we're going to do tomorrow night? We will have that public. We call it a meeting.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes, so we have a, we have a public hearing on the budget. That's required.
Okay.
And then after the, after that hearing is closed. You know, it's like one more chance to get input on the budget before you, before you adopt it.
Okay. Okay, so that's all happening tomorrow.
Yes, and then there's just, so there's two public hearings, ones for the state revenue sharing.
Got it.
And then, and then the second one is for the adoption of the budget.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay, and counsel, I apologize, uh, he's absolutely correct. On page forty, the um, under the staff recommends the, uh, callouts to the Parks Department and the equipment are on there.
Yeah, okay.
And I should have remembered that because I edited the doggone thing. My bad. I'm sorry, apologize. All right, um, and. Uh, the next then, page one ninety one. Um, this is an ordinance amending the North Bend City Council rules. And so if you go to page one ninety one of your packet. Um, uh, since the last meeting, uh, staff received um, one, um, set of additions. Those were sent to our city attorney. Council was provided a copy, and so this agenda item is being presented to you by our city attorney not once, but twice, because we're still working out that glitch on the agenda software. Um, so. Um, if you may, uh, Mark, you have the floor.
Yeah, again, these are the, the changes that you saw, uh, on May twenty eighth. There was some, uh, at that time, there was some. Desire from the council to have a more time to review those and potentially make additional tweaks or edits. Or ask questions, so I'm happy to to take any questions at this time.
So it seems like we're adding language, and if I'm understanding this correctly, it's about like a specific deadline for getting our agenda and any materials we want included by Wednesday at noon. And the second is that, um. We have a fifteen minute limit on our agenda items, but the first five is really what that council person should focus on using. So that we can have ten minutes of discussion.
Right.
Correct, so the, the first change is to, to give staff a, a, a more clear deadline. Of, of when to, to, to pull things from the, uh, consent agenda. Uh, or excuse me, to, to put an item on the work session agenda. The, the second change is to add some clarity around the, the process. And I guess lineup of speakers, so to speak, when, when somebody places an item on the work session agenda. Previously, there, there was no uh, no guidance on that. So the idea was to give the person who requested the item five minutes to lead off and then allow the mayor to uh, direct traffic after that first five minutes. Um, the next change is is a change in the process on removing items from the consent agenda. Uh, so we're going to add, um, that you can remove an item by voice or written request with at least twenty four hours prior notice to the start of the meeting. So this language is not in, shown in double, double underline because it's a replacement. So, so the new, the new rule would be that, um, if you want to remove an item from the consent agenda to do so at least twenty four hours prior to the meeting. The work session would be a, a, a perfect time to do that. You can also do so earlier which would be uh, appreciated by staff so they have more time to, to, to make adjustments to the agenda.
Mark, one question, number four. Does that give us the right to do away with written minutes?
Yeah, so the next change that's, that's struck.
What's that?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, he's referring to number four.
Going ahead.
All right.
Yeah.
Go ahead, say in order there then.
So the, 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 the last change, the bottom change is, is the change to the written minutes. It just relies purely on your audio or digital recording.
Good man, okay.
And so we'll have a we'll have a like written page. Except that all it's going to do is capture the votes, okay?
Correct, and, and so I included that because I, I feel like it is of value to have a, a one-page document that somebody could refer back to to look at what, what the motion was, what, what the votes were.
Yeah.
Um, so that there's a, a, a record of it so that you don't have to always uh, walk or go back through the, the, the audio and, and video recording.
Yeah, I agree. I thought with that satisfies concerns I have without.
And.
Question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I had email asking our IT manager to come and explain since video is, is, it has, it deteriorates over time. What's going to be the process for keeping the video reporting permanently? And I didn't get a response. Uh, I thought that we were allowed to ask questions and ask staff to come to the work session to answer questions like this that are pertinent to our discussion. And so that's my question. How are you going to keep video permanently?
It's digital.
Because that's the requirement. And I had done, I'm not sure, did anybody else get the list of the fourteen cities and how they handle their minutes that I gave to staff?
Yeah.
Okay, so. I talked to people at at least ten other cities and the other ones, I couldn't, I couldn't raise anybody to pick up the phone, so I looked to see if they had posted their minutes online. And I heard from several city recorders who absolutely did not want their meetings to be, to just rely on the video because the video isn't a permanent thing, and if you put it on YouTube, you don't own it. YouTube owns it. From what this recorder was saying, so that needs to be determined. Because that is not a permanent record. Video doesn't last forever. And, you know. Minutes, we have minutes going back to long, 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 long ways. And after ten years, you can send them to the state archives. So if you're looking to meet the state law as far as permanent, it ain't going to be video. You've got to figure out something else. And I was hopeful that our IT manager could be here, just I forget his name, I'm sorry, but that's something that has to be dealt with. The other thing is, I don't know who drafted this, but why did somebody completely line out the dissent? Because that was a topic of discussion in the previous council, and it passed, and it got support to pass. So why is it being scrapped? And was that your idea, Larry, or who, who drafted this? Who did the redlining?
I did, I did, counselor, counselor Nordoff, I did.
Well.
So there's no written minutes. So a written dissent doesn't seem to, to, to line up.
Well, I it could go with if you have a dissent that's only for an ordinance. I don't think anybody, you know, writes a dissent over a resolution. That's for an ordinance. It can be kept, it can be kept with a little write-up, one-page record of that meeting.
Can I, can I, so I've had concerns about this as well, and we talked, um, and I, and I asked some questions, and so because we are relying on the digital component having a dissent that you articulate will be the record, so we wouldn't need a copy of it. Physically, it would be your dissent and your discussion that would in that time, the dissent at the time of the meeting. And so that, because I was worried about that as well, but they said, and when I talked to some other people, it was, it was relayed to me that you can articulate your dissent and that would be the recording, which I appreciated. Because I was worried about that as well.
Let me explain how dissent works. You don't say it in the moment. You do not have it prepared at that meeting.
But if you know what's happening.
No.
When you reviewed your information and you know that you dissent, you would come to the meeting knowing that you don't agree with some of the things. This is why we get our information early. Correct?
Hmm.
So, Counselor Schultz, that, that was my thinking, but to be clear, these are your, these are the council rules. If the council wants to provide a a written dissent that will be, you know, attached to the unofficial minutes, you know, it, it can do so. The counselors can provide a, a dissent during council comments, which are captured under the digital recording. Um. If, 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 if we're going digital, this was, this was my, uh, you know, suggestion to, to, to go digital.
Well, I think if we're going digital, we should go digital for everything, so I don't think putting a dissent that's typed up would be related to if we're going digital. It's also just been super important. I mean, I make mistakes. I think of things when I get home that I wished I had said. I think that's pretty normal. But, um, you know, we do the best we can. You know.
I've got a lot of things I should have said.
Well, I say a lot of things you shouldn't say.
Well, I think if you're saying no to something, then you want to articulate why you're saying no, and so again, if you don't do it in the moment, you could potentially use your time of comment and say, I want to, you know, piggyback to it. But I also think that if you have reviewed your material when you get here, then you kind of know how you're going to vote on something as well.
Yeah.
So that was my concern. I thought that that was a good, a good compromise.
I'm just curious as to who lined it out. The lawyers did. Without any discussion with counsel, that's, that's.
That's what, that's what it is.
No, it's already lined out. It wasn't even a proposal, but maybe we should discuss it before we line it out.
We're discussing it. The red is all the discussion. This is all discussion. It's not official yet. Where this is the discussion currently.
Okay, my, my question is. Digital is forever.
So, yes.
Yeah, I mean, you can store it on the cloud, you can do whatever else. I mean, if you had written records here, this building burns down, we have earthquake, they're gone. If you store digital on the cloud, they're somewhere retrievable in perpetuity.
It is worth noting.
So, so if I may. Um, and to, uh, uh, be responsive to uh, the comments that were made. So, um, uh, on Sunday at eleven thirty nine PM, I did receive a request from the counselor uh, to have uh, IT manager James Ingram attend the meeting. Um. He comes in at seven AM, so his workday actually starts before I get here, and so I engaged with him. The salient point is that the counselor is under the belief that she can send an email and dictate my staff, and she can't. As a governing body, and so I want to address that. It says, other officers and employees, it's in the council rules. It says, any member of the city council may request that the city administrator direct any employee to attend a council meeting to confer with the council on matters relating to the city. Okay? And so if the council wants a member of staff that otherwise isn't here, any member duly assembled can give a directive to the administrator. You can't give directives outside of meeting, and that's, that's the misunderstanding or a bad interpretation of the rules. That said, first thing I did is I sent our city recorder and our IT person an email and said, please walk me through so that I can tell the council what we do so that the counselor's question can get answered. So right now, your meeting is being audio and video recorded simultaneously. A recording, so in there is a nice little server system, and then there's a computer here, and so it is being audio and digitally recorded. Simultaneously, it is being streamed, live streamed to YouTube, which is in the cloud. And then IT has backup systems on the computers that work nightly and then takes our data and our archives and backs it up offsite. So it's here. It's in YouTube. And it's in the cloud. So that's why I said, we're good. Our written minutes, well, they're in a binder or they're digital. Back in the day, they were typed in, so they're in a safe. And until they're all formally digitized, that is it's in a fire safe. As we have evolved, we keep a book with the signed copy, but we also have a digital copy, um, that is also then backed up. So not only do we meet, we exceed. And I will take issue, when a council becomes operational and calls cities and talking to uh, staff, they are required by ICMA ethics. This city is an ICMA city. The counselors are supposed to work through their city administrators, and if you wanted a survey done, staff does a survey. And I appreciate that the counselor wants to go and call all of these folks, but it's an ICMA violation. Each of those cities are required to direct her back to their administrator. That is the ICMA ethics. And so when you take an oath of office to uphold code and all that, part of it is, is you are an ICMA city. It's not just because I'm an ICA member and credential. The city previously took action to become an ICMA city. And when you do a survey, you will get the opinion of, say, a city recorder that may not like technology or may not have access technology, or more importantly, may not have a progressive council that wants to do and move to the next thing. And so I've always been a fan of telling the council, um, it's great to, you know, follow, but North Bend is a leader, and we've been a consistent leader for some time. And I want to continue doing that. So not only does the proposed minutes accomplish what the council, the majority of the council wants, because unbeknownst to the fact that council president Garboden put it on the agenda, it has been brought to the attention multiple times to the body and has been brought to my attention multiple times. And so we took the time, we researched the law, we've had multiple discussions with the city attorney, and so it was the appropriate. And so it was the appropriate time to go ahead and move it forward, um, and we did so, and as the council president says. It was a joint work session slash meeting, and if anyone's confused about that, just because it may have said something. We have an audio video recording that's here. On YouTube and in the cloud. So I hope that answers the question and makes everyone understand what we have and where it's at.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't think council was aware that we were going to be presented with revisions. Big revisions to the council rules when we got the agenda two weeks ago for the May twenty eighth meeting. So it shows up, and it's, it's, it's too late then to ask staff to check with the fourteen other cities whose council rules were consulted. When we revised our council rules in twenty twenty one, September twenty twenty one. So getting the agenda on Friday, say. And the meeting's going to be Tuesday over a holiday weekend, doesn't really give you much time to ask. Those particulars of your city staff, because it's looking at you in the face. And that's the problem I have with it.
We'll postpone it for two weeks.
I agree, I think we're done with it.
All right, sorry, it's been fifteen minutes.
What else we got here?
All right.
Um, better share anybody.
Your way.
You already.
Well, also the URA, I think.
All right, URA it is, URA has. Uh, called order, roll call, public comments, and then you have your consent calendar, that's your URA minutes from May fourteenth. You have your acknowledgement of your bills, there is a public hearing, again, uh, you have a city budget, you have a URA budget. Um, now I added this one, I didn't recall, did we make any changes to that one? Okay, yeah, no changes, I, 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 I thought we figured out how to do the library, so we're good, so no changes to the URA budget. And then the executive, uh, director for, if there's any questions, staff is here and glad to answer them.
No, be quick.
Good, all right.
I think we're done.
That's it, sir.
All right.